Seven fifteen this morning, I had a request from someone to do this, so here we are.
I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everybody. The issue on the agenda is the bridge at Airport Road by the Elk Country Grill. And I talked Matt on the phone. We put signs up, what was it Alan, two months ago?
Yeah, month and a half ago or so.
Which kinda got some area businessmen's attention, Matt being one of them. Due to the fact that there's a lot of heavy, fairly, quite a bit of heavy traffic that crosses that bridge and needs to. So, we decided to have a work session and in our conversation with Alan, he had been talking to Katie and I guess Paul had been talking to Mike about the bridge going to the rodeo grounds, it's culverts, it's not a bridge. And we may be pulled into that, there's a statute on the maintain- maintenance of bridges in municipalities that can be triggered and have county involvement in that as well. So, I guess we'll start with the Airport Bridge. And the issue with that is we have at least two companies that are affected by that. Raymaker Swanson and Morris Construction. They have truck traffic across there. I haven't heard from Jim, I'm kinda surprised about that, but I know that he's gonna be impacted by it.
Joe, can I just issue a point of clarification? Because my article in last week's A Cantha said that this weight limit would affect semi trucks, falling trailers. And the Department of Transportation called me subsequent to that article to clarify that it's not going to affect semi trucks falling trailers. That it's going to affect what she called, "single unit vehicles", like possibly garbage trucks, excavators, a combine. I don't know if a combine would fit across that bridge or not, but adding rate. For the record, not semi trucks with trailers, single unit vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. To clarify that further, the MCS contacted me as well. The week posting of sixteen tons per unit, so it'd be sixteen ton per truck, sixteen ton per trailer does affect combination of vehicles, but it's per unit. So, you have sixty thousand pounds on a combined unit.
And if I can just clarify one point, this came from the state, it didn't come from the county. So, I mean, because they're the ones that do the inspection on all the bridges in the county and...
And the affected parties are, you know, Shoto Fire and Earl Fire. Some degree EMS. And Teton County Road and Bridge uses the road as well as the bridge.
Farmers and ranchers too.
Yeah. To some degree, Public Works Department uses it for Shoto Waste Management. You know, there's businesses including the Shoto Country Club, Ear Mountain Machine, Jake Allzimer, Morris Construction, Mountain Storage, RSI, Teton Welding Machine. Customers and vendors to those businesses, as well as agricultural operations that are in the area. When MCS contacted me, the administrator contacted me and wanted to make sure that the commission was aware that it isn't a traffic violation to run across the bridge with its posting. It's actually a misdemeanor offense that could potentially carry you in prison. You know, there's obviously a need for the bridge and the road for the community. And the key and the reason I felt it's appropriate to have this meeting is to try to come together with a way to move forward. An actual plan, knowing that the county doesn't have the budget money to just poof, make a new bridge happen. How can we come together as a community and make it happen? And what's available to assist? Which is why I asked that Great West Engineering attends this meeting to help come up with a solution.
So, are we pretty confident that that assessment by DOP is an accurate assessment of what's in place?
By looking at the bridge, yes, it's deteriorated. And I've only been here for a short period, so Matt knows more of what the bridge was probably before, or Mike, than I do, but I know at this point that it's deteriorating.
It was built in nineteen sixty and it's nearing the end of its useful life. The reason for the reduced rating, if you read the MDT report, is because of, you know, rotting piles and the substructure. I can't speak on the accuracy of the ratings, I'm not qualified to speak on that. But, I mean, they have pages of, in their rating report of piling's feeling. There's also a floodplain aspect, Paul.
Yes.
Which Jeremiah is able to speak more about than I can.
Yeah, the MDT does inspections on county bridges over twenty foot span, and so they inspect it. And since their previous inspection, they have lowered the substructure rating from a six to a five out of ten, which is a concern. Cause, you know, it doesn't seem like it, five, mid-level, but that's actually a low rating for a foundation. And based on foundation rating, structuring, all the elements that they include in here, they do a load rating analysis. And so, the data that they produce for the signs is accurate for the condition of the bridge. If anything, it could be worse, cause I don't know that they've really got under there and poked around in the substructure to really determine if it's scour critical, cause we have flow right against that west abutment. And so, there could be some, you know, undermining or, you know, checking of that, that timber there that could even make it worse than a five there. And the overall structure condition is a two. I mean, you look at the overall condition of the bridge, you have timber structure, which typically has a useful life of thirty to forty years. It's been in place over that. The, you know, the angle to the roadway is not ideal for traveling public there. When you consider that versus road width, it's actually a narrow, narrower than county standard for width. We don't even know hydraulic capacity where it's at related to flow conditions in Spring Creek. So, when you look at all those elements and the stringers, the deck, foundation, I mean, it's not in greatest of shape. And, you know, it's, it still has an SR of, I believe, sixty-eight out of one hundred, but that is, oh, yeah, that is eligible for replacement based on, you know, federal highway standards. So, it's deteriorating and will continue to deteriorate with any timber structure.
Well, I just thought we'd get that unsettled and out of the way right off the bat that, you know, that isn't the direction that we're gonna make any headway on in terms of, is that an accurate assessment of that bridge?
Now, related to, and when I was discussing this with Matt, I think there's some priority for bridges on Spring Creek. Because the DNRC is going to be remapping the floodplain. Great West is actually taking that on to revise the floodplain maps. In Teton County, specifically on, you know, I'll be working on Spring Creek and Teton River. So, you know, what does that mean? You know, there's gonna be revisions to the floodplain maps, of course, that come out of it. But, related to bridge projects, there's going to be hundred year water surface elevations defined in there. And, you know, maps associated with it. So, when you go to replace that bridge after the maps are completed, you then have to go through a detailed floodplain permitting process, which I'm sure you're aware of. But, there's base flood elevations associated with it. So, it makes the permitting of a bridge from the floodplain standpoint a lot more complicated. We have to do a no-rise analysis. We have to ensure that the new bridge structure does not impact the water surface, does not increase the water surface in that area. So, there's a lot of work associated with just permitting a bridge in the future. Now, that's three to five years down the road. I mean, we're talking a ways out there before we get to that point, but there is going to be some remapping down the road. That could affect it and honestly could cost more just to replace a bridge for something, you know, you do now versus then, just on permitting itself.
So, what's the difference between doing it now?
Right now, you have approximate zone A, so you do have some flexibility in the raising water surface.
So, you have seen the detailed study for Shoto. I mean, that's right on the edge of that detailed study. So, I don't know where that bridge exactly falls, cause it's literally the boundary of that detailed study.
You would have to, I mean, you would consider it, you would have to consider the floodplain impacts with the bridge, no matter what, if you do it now or later on. But, later on, it's gonna be mapped all the way through that area.
But, I see there actually potentially being some value to having more of the information already accumulated for that project. Versus now, we're dealing with a study from nineteen eighty that kinda might cover that area and probably doesn't.
Oh, there's gonna be value in the new flood maps for sure, absolutely. I mean, it's gonna be accurate data based on, you know, the most current LiDAR that was collected and the most current hydrology. So, there's a lot of value to that, just the permitting standpoint of getting a bridge. And it'd be nice to have a bridge in and then have the maps reflect the new bridge versus build a bridge after the maps are done and then have to revise the maps in that area and such. So, there's, you know, it's not an end of the world, you know, it is what it is. But, it is something to consider related to the floodplain. And that kind of applies to the culvert structures there at the park as well, cause then those are gonna have an impact on the floodplain in the area. And those ones, I know there's a reduction in flow of those culverts. So, if that were to be replaced with a structure that has more hydraulic capacity in there, I think the floodplain would be definitely, you know, hopefully revised and not as wide because of those structures.
It'd be a benefit to the community to have them replaced prior to the issuance of the map. Both for the base flood elevation as well as the cost of future permitting. Significant cost?
Yeah, I mean, just developing, once you have a detailed flood study with base flood elevations, I mean, it could add twenty, thirty thousand dollars of permitting alone for really doing the same project, you know.
That's different for us though, cause we already have the detailed study in town, don't we?
The one at the ball field.
Yeah, eighty-two, but, I mean, you have a detailed study, but this would, you know, it's revision of that and establishes those exact elevations. And so, then you have to do kind of that no-rise analysis on top of it. Right now, we can determine whether the bridge has hydraulic capacity, meets county city standards, and you can implement it.
Less hoops to jump through.
Yeah, basically.
Twenty, thirty thousand per bridge, less hoops.
Paperwork documentation, further analysis to ensure that it's, you know, meeting all the requirements and such.
The bridge on Airport Road has to have a certain amount of freeboard, correct? The county can address that, the variance.
Do you mean for a new bridge or the one right now?
For a new bridge.
There's, county should have floodplain standards, I would imagine. Is it, what's the design flow then? Did you guys recently revise them?
Uh, let's see, I think it's twenty thirteen, probably.
So, it's probably, is it two feet of freeboard at the hundred year?
Yep.
So, and so I think where Matt's going is, and Mike and I have had this conversation, is that FEMA requires one feet, one foot. The state of Montana decided to take that a step farther. So, that's where I think there may be some room for a variance, is that one foot meets FEMA. So, as long as we can meet FEMA's, I don't think we can go anything less than FEMA's requirement. But, I think there is some room for the variance for something between one foot and two foot.
Yep. Preliminary of the existing bridge accommodates three hundred and seventy-five CFS.
The existing bridge?
Was zero freeboard, which is short of the requirements of sixteen hundred CFS.
Well, you know, again, the bridge was there before anybody came up with any of those numbers, so, right?
Nineteen sixty, and the flood study's nineteen eighty-two.
Right. And so, I mean, that is, that's one concept that I'm struggling with a little bit is that we have to put in a bridge for the hundred year event. When any bridge would be, any bridge built by today's standards would be a huge improvement over what's there right now.
Yep. Or a culvert.
Or culvert.
Yeah, and the county, I mean, you guys, what you have here, I'm just looking at, the two feet above base flood elevation is, that's kind of the typical model state floodplain ordinance. I'm sure that I shared with county and was adopted. That's not, I guess it's common now moving forward, but that was not typical. Typically, county roads, bridges, culverts were not designed for the hundred year flow then. I mean, it was typically twenty-five year event, maybe fifty year event, you consider the hundred year, but the, there was allowed flexibility in the cost versus, you know, outcome. So, what if the road floods at a fifty year event? If it's gonna cost you an extra two hundred thousand dollars to put the bridge in there? You do have the flexibility of issuing a variance to that, right? I mean, you can with all your, with all your regulations. But, it does, you know, the state is pushing for that. Now, you know, getting into the design of that bridge, you may have to issue yourselves in variance, cause we have site limitations at that site. You know, the existing bridge has a capacity of three hundred and seventy-five CFS without overtopping. I mean, we're talking four times that amount of flow going through there. Can we even realistically accommodate that with a railroad right there? With private land, you know, all those, can you really even accommodate that in that site configuration? And the railroad's not gonna allow us to build up and do anything on that side. You know, we can't come across the railroad and then just ramp up over a bridge. So, site limitations may drive what you can do there. And then, you know, the county commission may have to issue a variance because that's all they can do for that site. But, you kind of need to look at, you have current standards, what do you need to meet those standards? What the cost is, well, what's realistic there for replacement, what you can do with that as well.
Well, and the interesting thing about this, there's one bridge and then there's three sets of culverts below. So, do we necessarily have to be looking at a bridge?
I had asked Great West about possibly culverts or box culverts, thinking there might be a significant cost reduction. When it gets into the box culverts, the thought is the permitting and transportation as well as the installation costs of the box culverts would likely be more than a steel deck bridge.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could put culverts in there. But permitting requirements and everything else, I mean, you may be looking at a sizable, you know, buried or open bottom culvert structure, multiple culverts. I don't know what the scenario would be, which, yeah, could be just as costly or more costly than a bridge structure.
So, Katie, what does the FWP stance on culverts versus bridges?
Bridges are by far more preferred.
The what?
Bridges are by far more preferred. Spanning bridges would be the ideal scenario for a fisheries standpoint. Multiple culverts would be undesirable for a lot of reasons. And speaking to those other culverts that are on Spring Creek, you know, from our perspective, they're all undersized and contributing to the issues that have been occurring on Spring Creek for a while now. So, for the Airport Road one, a spanning bridge, I mean, even now, looking at the length of the bridge that's there, it's somewhat constricting even to what's, what it's like, would be preferred to be at. Ideally, it would be even longer than what's already there.
The bridge that's there is pretty constricted, but there's, I mean, it is what it is. You've got the railroad on one side, and I don't see any way to change it considerably, even if we do go with the bridge and not culverts.
Yeah, I think you can expand and add some floodplain area for overbank flows on the east side. They're already, you know, the channel kind of runs right along the west side there. We're pretty limited on what we can do, we're actually in the railroad right away already. So, you'd have to work with the railroad on the west abutments and how we configure that. And then, you do have room to expand kind of to the west, more for flood overbank flow, not specifically the channel. But, you can, you know, we were looking at somewhere around a forty foot span bridge, something like that in there, which you can easily accommodate with, you know, concrete trident bridge structure, something like that. You know, on a typically a driven pile foundation, concrete pile cap, you know, pretty straightforward bridge structure.
So, what does a forty foot concrete bridge cost?
In the neighborhood of three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. They're not cheap, yeah. Contracted out, you know, but they're definitely not a cheap structure.
One of the things that needs to be mentioned is the safety portion of that bridge. It's narrow. Everybody in this room knows it's narrow. There's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic as well as commercial residential traffic on that road. So, by widening the bridge, you're not only fix, we're not only looking at reducing the reduced weight capacity, we're providing something that allows for safe usage of that road for pedestrian use as well as existing traffic. There are funding sources available to help with that. And again, Jeremiah has a wealth of experience in obtaining funding.
Yeah, there's, there's, well, there's limited funding opportunities for bridges. We deal with it all the time, all the counties we work with. But, the Treasure State Endowment Program, TSEP, they're funded, it's funded every, by any means through the legislature, but it's coal severance tax fund, based off the account is, the interest off the account where the money comes from. And eligible project, bridges are eligible projects under that program. So, it's one of the main sources of grant funds for county bridge projects. And it's a fifty-fifty match program, up to five hundred thousand dollars. Actually, you can get up to seven fifty in certain situations. So, it is a good way to fund half the bridge, right? And it's a good program for that. There's a lot of criteria and things like that, but we use it, Great West has with our clients, just about every cycle, we have grant applications in there for bridge replacement projects. There's a whole set of criteria and things that you must meet with the grant application, but it is a, it is a good program and one of the few programs for bridge replacement.
So, do you know how limited that match is? In other words, can that match, not necessarily all come from Teton County in a cash form? Can it be other grants? Can you match that half with another grant possibly, or?
You can, yeah, it's a state grant, so you can match it with any other grant or funds you get. You can do in-kind work to match as well. I've worked with counties that have done roadworks, some of them actually had done the whole project and then they used their, you know, county crews and labor and costs as the match to the grant. So, you know, the grant pays for the bridge products and the county's tracking of their equipment and labor and materials and such offset the cost. So, yeah, there's ways to do that. With this structure, I mean, I threw out some numbers, but we don't really know. Yeah, like, we know what's the alternative, what do you need to do out there? Culverts, maybe, you know, you want to investigate those. So, one thing I had mentioned to Matt is that the TSEP program has planning money. After July first, they'll have a call for, or typically July first, they'll have a call for planning grants, which allows you to do a preliminary engineering report, to do an analysis of the structure, to figure out what the recommendations are, what the permitting requirements are, floodplain, you know, all of them. You contact every, all the permitting agencies, you look at all your alternatives for different bridge types, sizes, culverts type sizes, ultimately working to a recommended solution with the cost. And it sets the, it gives you an idea of what you're dealing with, what you need to do to deal with that situation. And then, it also is the backbone for any grant applications you go after. And you've got your full PER ready to go and then you could submit, you know, on TSEP or other programs out there.
And is there value to trying to do two bridges? I mean, I see some value, but from the financials, from trying to get, get it financed, are there, rather than keeping them separate?
There, it, yes and no. Yes, from the standpoint of, you know, combining resources together in one. And with the Treasure State Endowment Program, you may have one bridge that ranks higher than the other one, right? And so, you kind of average the two and maybe the overall, their average is higher. So, it helps with the ranking process. What it doesn't help with if you're going after funds in the program is the need for the project, because you have to match fifty-fifty. So, if you're coming in with two bridges, they say, "Well, you're committing to matching these two bridges, why don't you just take that money and build one of them?" So, you rank lower on your financial need, but it may rank higher because of the critical need for the bridges themselves. So, yeah, there, you know, you can look at combining those as well.
Well, and I think, you know, for Spring Creek remaining viable, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to do a really very piecemeal of, "Well, let's fix this one bridge" when we know there's a problem right upstream from that, so...
Now, for the culverts accessing in the park there, the state of Montana DES department is gonna have a call for hazard mitigation grant funding. And because of the issues with icing and flooding caused by that structure, I think it would be, you know, an eligible applicant there. And that, that's, you know, as far as the structure and replacement, I think, you know, it's definitely cheaper than Airport and what, you know, what we're looking at there.
The cost estimates we got from you guys were, and we were, the city was gonna do the lion's share of the work.
Yep.
And, you know, like, pour the footings and just bring in one of those concrete slab, like a potter type bridge. I think we were somewhere around sixty thousand.
So, yeah, with that, you know...
But they were narrower too, and thirty foot is all we were going with.
It's a great program for that kind of approach to it, where you...
Is that a seventy-five?
It's a seventy-five, twenty-five, and so typically what we do is, you know, you ask for the total project cost, including your labor and such, and then you use your city services to match that. So it's kind of the same thing. You get the, you know, the, the grant program to pay for the bridge materials and then city crews put it in, or you hire a contractor to help out. But I've worked with counties where we have those types of situations where we can just put a small short slab bridge in, where you can handle with an excavator, you're not doing a deep foundation system. You don't have heavy truck traffic, you know, think other things to consider. It is a, a great way, and just that site configuration, you are looking at a shorter span slab bridge. Where the other one, you know, we're, we're beyond just your shallow slab bridge into the next configuration of, of beam size with that site.
One of the things that's come up is possibly looking for MDT funding on the airport road bridge. If MDT were to put together a bridge project, the cost of it would be significantly more, correct?
Oh, yeah, if MDT were to take it on?
If it's an MDT bridge?
Yeah, it would be a million, one point two, one point five, something like that.
And the MDT rating on an off-system route, or an off-routes bridge similar to that, it would rank lower priority, you think, or, or do you, do you feel that it'd be a project in foreseeable future?
The off-system bridge program is underfunded. With the amount of bridges, the, this, the counties that MDT is involved with on the county level and secondary highways and such, they are significantly underfunded. So they take on a handful of bridges a year across the state and they ask their county to nominate bridges. I don't know if you, Teton County nominated any bridges to?
We have one on Muddy Creek right now that's nominated, but we probably have the ability to switch that around if we have to. If this one's, the deal with the off-system bridge program, there's no match to the county. The MDT just comes in and builds a bridge and sweeps it off and you're good to go.
Yep, yeah, it's, it's great for that. The only problem with that is it, it could take ten, fifteen-plus years to get it on there. You know, they kind of, they have their own prioritization system and based on what you guys nominate for bridges and they look at critical need and such, and then they, like I said, they only are funding a handful of them across the state every year. So when it comes up, when it's programmed, I mean, you can look at the MDT's five-year plan and see that, okay, we're not in there now, who knows when it will be. Now, there is an opportunity and you'd have to, depending on if you got TSEP and such, but we have in the past used TSEP funds to match MDT off-system bridge program, where you're coming to MDT with a match on the project. So there's benefit there because they're, they're getting financial commitment from the county through your grant, of course, to, um, to, to, to move on the project. And, uh, and sometimes it helps prioritize others. I mean, you know, maybe they, they can't come to the table. We don't know how their funds look, but there, there is opportunities, I guess, to kind of, you know, match different programs together to get them.
Katie, when we talked the other day, you talked about other funding that you could work on, that we, if we lumped everything together.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mike, he talks a little bit about it as well, just if we are looking at the system as a whole and included the other culverts that are undersized, we could look at future fisheries money. Focusing just on one bridge or covert, I don't think would be very competitive from our application standpoint. But if we focused on multiple ones and making the system healthy as an entire stream, I think it would be competitive. Now, it's not anywhere to the scale of three hundred thousand dollars or anything like that, but it could help cover some of the engineering costs or at least one of the sites or materials for multiple sites.
Probably the initial step to move forward would be looking at commencing with PER or engineering report, correct?
Well, yeah, deciding if the, you want, you want to focus, I mean, I, I think there is value in looking at the, the three structures and considering them, and I think there's opportunity. We'll have to get creative in how we approach it, but if, you know, we go after future fisheries, maybe we can get HMGP. We go after TSEP and you start pooling all these funds together and, you know, making it affordable. But we kind of need to look at the issues we have, you know, charting a, a plan forward on, on how to address them. Cause I think if you.
Yep.
The, the one that's on the state highway, I mean, the state's going to have to come in on that one if you're going to do all four of them.
Yep. How would a PER work? Would you take the county as a whole or just the stretch of Spring Creek on or both or?
It just depends on, you know, what the county wants to do. I mean, with your, if you got a TSEP grant, you structure your application on what you want to do. Do you want to look at, um, you know, a handful of the bridges and prioritize? Typically, what we like to do is grab all the MDT assessments from county bridges, work with the, you know, the, the road department on some of their priorities and take, and take a look at those bridges and kind of help put together a, you know, capital improvements plan, you know, a plan for your bridges. What are your priorities? And that also helps with, um, you know, funding agencies when they look at and say, okay, your Spring Creek structures are your top priorities, this is why you guys are going after them. But, you know, that and then, yeah, you can do, you know, a, a PER, multiple PERs on the bridges. You can, you know, sometimes combine them depending on the site conditions and such. And, um, you know, because they would be on Spring Creek, we're contacting the same agencies for the same body of water. We just have a little different configurations, but we're working on same hydraulics and sizing and such. So it's, it's, they're similar in nature and you work in one water body like that.
And then maybe a, a construction project that's phased out over X amount of years, you know, five years or whatnot. The Muddy Creek Bridge, you feel scheduled for twenty twenty-six, correct?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. What do you think would be a realistic goal on, say, the Spring Creek Bridge and the airport with a TSEP grant?
TSEP funds, if successful, would be available in twenty-three. So you could go to, you could build the structure late fall of odd years. The grant applications are due in the spring of even years and then they're ranked and prioritized and then it's legislative action. I mean, House Bill seven covers the TSEP projects. And if it's funded, you contract with the Department of Commerce on, you know, July first of that odd year and then you're off and running. So you can squeeze it in there, you know, at, at that. But that would be the soonest with the TSEP program you can get to it.
Is it realistic to be twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, I've got bridges, you know, that are being considered now that we will be building this fall.
So Keith, since we got you here, can you, what's your opinion on traffic flow and safety and those kinds of things? I think coming from you is the right spot for that kind of.
The, you know, that bridge that's there is a one, there's only one car at a time. It's one-way traffic essentially. That probably being the most, biggest safety issue. And there are a lot of people who walk that route and you do see people kind of, everybody's pretty cordial when they're approaching that, that airport road bridge. You know, and it is heavily used by all kinds of farm equipment, dump trucks, garbage trucks. You know, I think it's a, it's, it's something we really can't do without, I don't think. You know, like if, if it got to the point where it was too dilapidated to, to, um, be able to support either more than a, a car would be a real disaster as far as the economy and, and efficiency and everybody's business. But as far as a, a safety issue, we're getting by with what we have, but it could be a lot better.
I got a question for you on the PERs.
Yeah.
So just considering the, the two culverts in city limits, the third street and the rodeo grounds. Is it, assuming we're just going after that DES money, do we need a PER for that? Cause we're not, we're not evaluating a structure, we're replacing it for something else.
Yeah, for that grant program, you don't need a full PER. TSEP you would or in, yeah. But for that program, you would want to, with it, typically they have a call or a letter of intent and you say, we're, we want to replace these, these culverts with bridges. You do have to have, um, you have to have, it, it's kind of like a feasibility analysis, right? We have to size the structure and you have to have a benefit cost analysis done. The benefit cost has to be over one. FEMA has this black box calculator where you plug some numbers in and if you have a project over one, which is, it's essentially the cost of the project compared to the financial impacts that no bridge, you know, the closure would cause. So detour routes, impacts on emergency services, cost to the city if you were to have, you know, a closure. You build all those in as long as you have that over one. So yes, there is some investment and it's just not a P, a full PER. Uh, they do, environmental's a component to it, so we would still want to reach out to the permitting agencies and make sure that, you know, their response is included in the application so that, uh, you know, that what, what, you know, it's state DES, but it's FEMA program. What they, they don't want to have any, they don't want to fund something that's not going to move forward because of environmental regulations or you included a cost so low that you're not actually going to move forward with the project.
So I've got a question about variance. Have, have you ever asked for a variance from FEMA? Have you ever had to ask for a variance from, you know, it, it's one thing to, to go through the process of a variance of our county floodplain regulations. And I'm not sure, you know, maybe this project doesn't require any type of variance from FEMA regulations, but, you know, as a community, we have to stay within FEMA's regulations to continue as an active participant. So, um, you know, hopefully the project would not require a, um, variance from FEMA. I, I have no idea what that would require.
So FEMA is just guidance, they don't actually regulate. But it's, so it's at the county or city level. You know, you guys are ultimately issuing the floodplain permit. Even the DNRC, you're consulting with them to review and, and make recommend, help you make a recommendation.
I am smiling underneath my mask, by the way.
But it's ultimately the, the county and then within city jurisdiction, the floodplain administrators responsibility to issue floodplain permits. Now, you can be audited from FEMA and they could look at your permits and they could question the variance you issued, things like that, but it is at the local level. They, they offer guidance, they offered, you know, ultimately the flood, model floodplain ordinance to the state, which the state shared with counties and cities for use. Now, that model floodplain ordinance with the two feet of freeboard at the hundred-year event is substantial. I mean, that's, MDT doesn't even design their bridges. They had, you know, they've always had a design criteria of one foot of freeboard at the hundred-year event. So it, it, it has, I mean, that's, uh, been an issue with a lot of structures. And in some applications, you know, why you would want to do a, a, a PER feasibility analysis on the structures? Cause you know, you have these in place, you want to meet your ordinances, right? You want to look at that, but if it's not feasible at all, you may, it's close the bridge or issue a variance for this structure type. I mean, it wouldn't make sense to, to build an, you know, a multimillion dollar overpass over the railroad and move the highway just to accommodate a two feet of freeboard at the hundred-year event. It wouldn't make sense to build a two-hundred-foot span that goes way out into the fields because we'll never get water over there to accommodate the freeboard. So there has to be some reality in there, but you want to look at what you have for design standards and regulations and try and get there and then decide what you can and can't do.
So I just want those, those three guys to be listening closely to, to that last thing, cause that's where it, where it would end up, so.
Alan?
How many off-system bridges does the county have roughly? Twenty, fifty, hundred?
I'm not sure on bridges. I know everything else, but.
We get, there's an inventory list we get, but I don't know how many. It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot of you.
There's a lot of, you know, this is probably one of the smaller ones, but I mean, you go out east of Fairfield and they're all over out there. There's a bunch of, you know, and they're twenty-five foot, thirty foot, and they're all wooden structures.
The PER process for a county as a whole versus one, one bridge or two bridges, is there a, a large difference in price structure?
You wouldn't want to do PERs the whole, like those would be individual bridges identified. Cause there's, there's a lot of investment in looking at those. But as far as, you know, typically what is done on, on our part, if we, if the county wants to get a handle on bridges is we, we pull all MDT's off-system bridges and we put those into a spreadsheet matrix and look at structure rating and condition and things. So you have an idea of all MDT rated bridges. Then we meet with you folks and say, okay, you know, give us your list of bridges and where they're at and then what your priorities are, and then we pick out, you know, a dozen or whatever, or whatever and make, spend a couple of days inspecting those bridges. So then we have, you know, we have NBI certified bridge inspectors that do the same thing as MDT. So then your small bridges, under twenty-foot or ones that MDT maybe not even aware of that they're not inspecting, you have inspections on all those and so you have this list of bridges. But as far as the PER, you don't want to do each bridge. I mean, as they come up and need, if you're pursuing funding, then you consider those.
Is there funding to help the county with that type of a project available?
The, the, the TSEP planning grant, yeah, yeah. I mean, you could use that planning funds to do the, typically we come in with the planning grant. You do evaluation, you do, you know, one or two PERs and you help prioritize the list of bridges. And, you know, at the outcome is a couple of PERs, your priority list of bridges and a couple of PERs and a plan to pursue funding, you know, a, help with a plan to, to do something with your bridges.
So something of that nature, would it be, uh, the cost of the county, would it be less than fifty thousand?
Yeah, the, the TSEP, the maximum planning grant you can get is fifteen thousand, which you have to match fifty-fifty. So, you know, you're essentially thirty thousand and that's kind of basically where we, we work with to do those evaluations and, you know, PER or two and, and help kind of chart a path forward on what to do with the bridges.
A lot of those bridges out there could be replaced with larger culverts, six or eight-foot culverts. I mean, that's.
That's what we've been doing, is replacing every small bridge with culverts. And the, I mean, the state does the inventory of the bridge and they look at them. So I'm pretty comfortable with what they're doing. It's just once in a while we get caught unaware like we did on this bridge at the airport road.
Yep, and some of those, um, we have worked with counties in the past where you have a pile of those bridges and if you have enough that are in need of replace, that are at high priority, you can, it, it makes sense to go after TSEP. It doesn't make sense to do that for a bridge or two, right? You do a PER and, but if you do five or six of them together and then have, um, you know, you go after TSEP to pay for the materials and the county crews put them in, you know, you're, you're saving money. But if it's just small pipes and things, it, even at that, it's, it's just way easier and cheaper to buy the materials and put them in.
Right.
Yeah, you don't need to, um, I mean, we, we always put those in the priority list because they're MDT inspected and it's easy to plug them into your spreadsheet. And, but as far as doing anything with them, yeah, I mean.
You know, we talked about the Muddy Creek Bridge and this bridge. That bridge has deteriorated since I came a year and a half ago, a lot, it's gone downhill a lot. So that's one that has to be done and that, and maybe that's why they picked that bridge. But it, and it's used by the farmers and it, it needs to be replaced. It's going backwards real quick, so, which is the same with this one here. You know, this one's going to get to a point. You know, this one's going to get to a point where it's just going to be gone. We get a high water, gets behind it and it's gone, so.
So if the county was able to get a grant for a match through TSEP and some other grant money, is there the ability to use Pilt money to cover the rest of the cost?
We can use Pilt money for whatever we want to, we just don't have a lot of it.
And it fluctuates year to year?
It's not even guaranteed, right? It is a, it's a congressional appropriation, sometimes they don't fund it at all. What we do is we have, I think we've reserved, just not legally, but mentally we reserve enough to where we can pay off our motor graders if we have to. We, we pay all those motor graders out of Pilt because the county road budget can't eat it. So if you take off the reserve that we need to completely pay off motor graders, there's not a lot of money in there. And right now it's bad timing because we have a chip seal project on the Teton River Road. It's going to be a hundred and $50,000 match. We've been working on the South Fork Bridge and that's evidently going to be a $400,000 match. So the timing for this deal couldn't, couldn't possibly have been any worse.
Who are you working with on the South Fork Bridge?
Federal Lands Access Program. But any of these projects, the South Fork Bridge is a good example, the Forest Service owns the bridge. And if you get to the Airport Road where you've got the railroad right away, anytime you get other entities involved, the complications just seem to explode. So I can see this Airport Bridge getting pretty complicated pretty fast, too.
Yeah, the railroad is one of the first, we'd have to engage and just see what you can and can't do within the right of way. I mean, the whole west abutment is sitting in there.
In the right of way.
Yeah. They're the, they're the driver on that one.
When's the South Fork Project slated? This year or is it next?
Uh, the, the chip seal is this year.
This year.
The bridge is at least two years out.
It's, we're still working on it, so it could be 26, we don't know. But the fact that the Forest Service owns the bridge, it's historic. Besides, there's a ton of.
Extenuating circumstances.
Yeah. You know, my, my two cents as somebody who's affected financially by Airport Road is I would encourage the County Commission to move forward with some, some sort of plan. Whether, how you do that is not my issue, but moving forward, you know, into some type of plan for it is an issue. And it's not just my, my personal desire, there's other people affected along their road that.
Well, we understand that.
Would have.
Off-system bridge program does have flexibility. We, I will assure you that we will be in Great Falls talking with the, the DOT people about the concerns we have with this bridge. Cause that's still by far the easiest way to do it for the county financially.
And if it's programmed, I, I don't know if they've started work on it yet. I would imagine they probably have or getting close to if they're going to look at implementation in 25, would you say?
That was the plan last time I read it, was implementation. But the other, the other issue with that is if, if that other bridge was hanging in there, we could possibly, I know that other counties have switched their priorities. You can do that. But if we have a bridge that's failing and they're up, it's on Muddy Creek and there's no other.
No way.
If that bridge goes out, there's going to be a lot of people driving a lot of extra violence to get to town.
So you could maybe, you could, if MDT would be agreeable to switching, I mean, you may be able to use like TSEP for the other bridge and off-system for this one or, or vice versa. It'd be creative, yeah. Cause that, I, I don't know what the bridge will, but if it's failing and it's sole access, I mean, as far as priority with TSEP, that's going to just elevate that even higher. So your chances of funding get even higher with issues like that.
What road is that on?
Third North.
Third Road, North West?
East, West.
North, West.
You can, yeah, you can use, we have partnered with MDT on bridges that have been programmed. And I, I talked about get, you know, get a TSEP grant and then match it and, you know, try and accelerate the design schedule on, on those projects.
That's the road to A Rod Lake?
Yep, yes it is. Fisheries?
And I, I think, you know, MDT has, you know, they do switch priorities for counties and such. But I think, you know, coming in with a plan, say, okay, we're going to, we're going to fund this. I, I did it down in Madison County, they had a, a bridge that was scheduled in the off-system. They actually had designed it and were moving forward with the, the project. And the county came to them with a plan, we're going to use TSEP for the bridge in your off-system. And we, we want you to dedicate those funds to this other bridge, which is, you know, one of our priorities as well. MDT was willing to partner with them and it, you know, they used TSEP for one and off-system for the other. And kind of, you know, you can, they're, when you're coming to the table to MDT and.
They have been really good to work with.
They've been really good that way, yep.
So I guess we've gained a lot to think about. I, we knew there wasn't going to be any decisions.
Well, yeah.
At least we painted a pretty good picture of what we're up against. So Katie, you said that the, the bridges would be preferable to F W P?
Yes.
As far as the fisheries are concerned and is there any grant? Will they, will they put their money behind that?
A future fisheries grant, like I mentioned, if you had, if you incorporate multiple structures where you're looking at improving the health of the system as a whole, would be competitive and could contribute money to that. And the deadline for future fisheries is June 1, with, I think, access to money by the summer. And talking with Sarah Hartley with D E S, it sounds like they also have a earlier deadline for post-flooding money applications, which would be June 30th with access with money relatively quickly.
Does that exist this year?
I think so, yeah. I'm, me, I have a, I'm going to meet with her on Monday to talk about that. But if, if the alternative was culverts or multiple culverts and you'd be open to switching to a spanning bridge system, I think that would be a competitive application.
You got a card or two?
I do, yep.
So Katie, how much of the, the funds that would be available for the future fisheries announce?
I think Alan needs your card.
Typically projects range between 20 up to $40,000. There is, it's, it's open, there's no maximum limit and I don't believe there's any match required. Matches make them more competitive. But it. For that program if you're interested. If the County should want to look at that, the Future Fisheries Improvement Program is, like I mentioned, the deadline's June 1. And we'd be happy to talk more about that program if that's something that you're interested in looking at.
Well, we need to look at the, the scope, the whole picture because there needs to be something done all the way down through the rodeo grounds bridge. So if there's some way that we can lump that all together.
We need to go talk to MDT because one of them is their issue.
Right.
And they might have some extra funds too, if we were going to do a comprehensive deal. And just clean up the whole Spring Creek.
Would that be something that would be worthwhile being engaged in, is that discussion? Or would it be better to have a P E R if you're going to be engaged?
No, I think, I think we need to look at, you know, kind of what a plan is. And yeah, talk with MDT, if they have no plans for improvement on their structure at all, well, I need to make them aware that it is an issue and we need to deal with it. I think though, related to the two city structures, you know, I think Future Fisheries and H M G P would, would definitely be eligible programs. And it sounds like timing wise, grant applications would be pretty similar in process. But you would want to be planning for the reach. So we, you know, we want to be discussing with MDT if they have any priorities and maybe make them aware of issues and that they should program it or do something with that bridge. And then also, you know, a plan for the Airport Road structure.
Would it be better to look at this as more like a partnership and we're all working towards the same goal rather than trying to lump them all together just because the Airport Road project needs a P E R to get through TSEP? The city projects don't need that.
Yep.
It feels like we just, we're all kind of in the same club, but doing separate things together. It might work more efficiently.
Yeah, for sure, yep. Yeah, I think that would be the best approach. Cause if you're just heading after one and, I mean, you.
I think we'd go after both of ours.
Yep.
With Future Fisheries and D E S.
Isn't that half of the Airport Bridge years, isn't that the line?
Nope. Jack, Jack Kamasor almost wanted to take that road. I just started this job and I said, no, no.
Better try.
So it was you. He wanted to make a walking death, the only way he was going to get it was to trade the road. I was like, no. I'm feeling really glad about that advice right now.
Any other questions?
I think I'm good, thank you everyone for coming.
Yeah, thanks everybody, you've done a good job of explaining.
A lot of things to think about.
Yeah, if you have any other questions that come up, just feel free to give me a holler. Yeah, we can help out however, help the city out however we want to approach it, but I definitely think.
Yeah, I need to get back with Ryan and I've kind of been waiting to see where this was going to go and I'll report by PM.
Yep.
I think, I think we're, we've muddled around now for coming on a year and I think we're ready to start to get some traction. And spinning our wheels, but.
I guess I have a question for Katie, is there other funding either from licenses or whatever on the fishery side that may be available?
Not, not for a city or county project like this. I think that Future Fisheries is the only grant program I could think of that would be applicable.
The, the only reason I ask that is because it's a multi-reoccurring problem that we've had with Spring Creek and flooding and, you know, going into your hatchery type funding.
Yeah, yeah, I, no, I, I definitely hear you. Just from how we are able to spend our funding and where, what we're able to allocate for different projects, I think from an infrastructure perspective, Future Fisheries is still the only access. I mean, other than like my personal budget, it has to be spent on, you know, direct contributions to anglers. And we do that through the Hatchery Program and, and they wouldn't have any money for infrastructure either. So I think Future Fisheries would be the best foot forward of F W P contributing money. But, you know, when talking about looking at how to make applications competitive, you can use angler hours and recreational hours as part of, you know, look, how we've used for like flat grants before in the past. You know, we have contributed that type of data, made the emphasis that recreation is contributing to the economy. But for direct money, I think Future Fisheries is the only option.
Make those kids out of creeks, I mean, so they're all out.
Good luck with that.
That recent assessment the Transportation District did on the Teton River didn't come as far as Shoto and didn't really.
Didn't include any Spring Creek, no. If you want to look through it and check on it, I'm sure it did cover anything in Spring Creek that I recall. Gentlemen.
All right, thank you gentlemen. All right, thank you. Nice meeting you everyone, thank you.
Did you get an award or bid for a chip seal yet? When does it go out? I think this, when's the chip seal bid go out, Alan? The chip seal bid for the River Road?
I'm not sure, I looked at, may?
I think it was this spring, yeah. When it gets awarded, let me know who gets it, cause I'll probably, I'm going to try and buy some chips for him, probably.
We can do that.
I've learned that the sooner you get on that stuff. So we're just looking at the two culverts on Spring Creek.
So I guess during the meeting.
The rodeo grounds.
Okay.
You know, as, that's the city.